I acknowledge the Tasmanian Aboriginal people as the traditional custodians of the land at which we meet. I pay respect to elders past and present and recognise their continuing spiritual connection to the land. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to vouchsafe thy blessing upon this council, direct and prosper its deliberations to the advancement of thy glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Clarence. Amen. Councillors, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to this council meeting on Monday the 28th of November. Just to let everyone know that this meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube and what is said in this meeting is not protected by our privilege and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. I note that there are no apologies. Are there any declarations of interest of councillors or close associate? There have been none. Moving on to the omnibus items. The first one, 4.1, being the confirmation of minutes of our last council meeting held on the 7th of November 2022. They've been circulated and taken, the motions they've been taken as read and confirmed. Moving on to mayor's communication. That's been circulated, the mayor's diary entries for myself from the 7th of November to the 28th of November, as well as the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie, councillor Heather Chong, councillor Bree Hunter, all on behalf of myself. Moving on to...
Mr Mayor, my honour.
Yes, sorry, councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On the 19th of November 2022, there was the official opening of the Belray Yacht Club Marina Expansion. Was that communicated to all in Sundry as far as, as far as the elected representatives are concerned?
I received invitation from a commoner of the Belray Yacht Club. I'm not, I'm not aware, it wasn't up to council, it wasn't our event, Alderman James, so it's something you'd have to take up at the BYC. But I note that there were state members of parliament there, but as to the invitation list, we had no input into that. But thank you for your question. Call them, Alderman. Oh, councillor Alderman, right.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I note your mayor's diary entries and all the rest of it. I would just like to, for the public record, at our last council meeting, there wasn't a paper diary circulated and you actually read it out verbally. I was wondering if, A, we could possibly have that document that you read out to the meeting actually circulated, so that there's a hard copy of it exists somewhere for files. And secondly, I'd also like you to note that there was a meeting between you and the, and the proponents of Shambrood after your election as mayor that wasn't noted on that previous verbal mayor's communication.
Councillor Alderman, thank you for the question. You'll note that on page six of the minutes, the mayor's communication as was read out at the last meeting is provided there in writing. So that is available and we've just moved the minutes. So with regards to meetings, the practice that we're following is the practice that has been followed, I'm told by previous administrations. If something needs to be added, I'll ask Sir Yarke to look at that and make that amendment. Thanks, Sir Yarke. Are there any other questions, councillor Alderman? No. Any other questions at all on mayor's communications? All right, thank you. Moving on then to noting the workshops conducted on both the 14th and the 18th of November. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I refer to 4.3 of the council workshops. And the confidential briefing, is it possible to have a, one word or something in there to provide, without going into chapter and verse, what actually was discussed or what the heading or what the key factor in relation to that confidential briefing? I just seek if that's possible or is it something that ought to be kept within workshop?
That's, that's a good point. Thank you, councillor James. My suggestion then that we add there confidential briefing by Shambrood Australia. You happy with that?
I'm happy, very happy and I think it's excellent that, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other comments on this part of council workshops? There being none, moving on then to tabling of petitions. Sir Yarke, are there any petitions?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Moving now on to item number five, which is, sorry, 4.5, reports from outside bodies. Are there any reports from outside bodies? The councillor James, thank you, or other bodies, I should say.
I have the minutes of the Howa Recreation Centre, the minutes of the 18th of November and also the minutes of the last AGM that was held at Howa Recreation Centre. And I advise council that Mr Roger Barney was re-elected as chairperson and Michael Giedt as deputy chair and the other members that were put up were declared elected. So, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other reports? There being none, we'll move now on to item 4.6, the weekly briefing reports of the 7th, 14th and 21st of November. The motion is that they, the recommendation is that they be noted. Any items to be raised at this junction? There being none, moving on then to item five, public question time. Oh, I think, excuse me, thank yous. I'm asking a move-up for the motion for your notice. I thank you councillor Kennedy, councillor Chong seconded that. I'll put the motion, all those in favour. It being unanimous, thank you. So we're going to get to public, item number five, public question time. There's a question on notice, Sir Yarke.
Thank you, Mayor. We had two questions from Mrs Denise Hoggan. The first, or both questions are in relation to the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area. And the first question is, has council negotiated a new lease for Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area since the lease that was sealed on the 4th of November 2013? The answer to that question is no. The second question is as follows. Is there the intention by Clarence City Council or the state government to alter the lease of 4th of November 2013 in any way? The answer to that question is there has been no discussion between council and the state government about altering the lease terms.
Thank you, Sir Yarke. There being, no answers to previous questions, take your notice. We move now to questions without notice. Are there any questions without notice from members of the public? Thank you. If you could come forward please and state your name and address, please.
Oh, you can all hear me. Thank you, Mr Mayor. David Beard, the general manager of the Moti Yacht Club Tasmania, who addresses 44 Pindos Drive, Tranmere. I'm joined today by Neil Houston and also John Smith. I do have two questions and I realise that I'm only allowed to ask one. The second question is only a very short one, very simple to answer, so I'd ask that maybe you consider me allowing me to do that.
Mr Beard, under many regs, I do have the discretion. I'm happy to extend that discretion on this occasion.
It saves me coming back next week or next month. So firstly, I'm a qualified civil engineer and fellow of the Institute of Engineers Australia and I'm also a councillor at Tasman and have considerable experience in boating on and off the water. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate you all on your recent election success and the club would welcome a visitation at any time by any of the council laws to show you what we're up to, also our plans for the future and also give you an indication of what we contribute to the local community as a club. I would like to address you and ask a question in respect to an application for a boat shed. It's number 026849, which council's yet to consider. And although the incorrect address is on the application, it is adjacent to 1 Ford Parade, Lindisfarne. The application has been advertised and having seen some of the submissions, I am quite satisfied that the grounds for objection have adequately been covered. In respect to traffic management, the council relies on the Tasmanian municipal standards for road design, for load, road widths, lane widths, turning circles, parking and the like. Unlike a road, the marine environment is completely different when considering vessel movements. An operator must be aware of wind, depths, tidal flow, other vessels moving and stationary, along with the vessel's capabilities. So that's whether it's got side thrusters or whether it's stern drive and the like. Even over the past month, we have had three instances of boat collisions when docking in our marina, which is well designed and has plenty of manoeuvring room. The photos supplied within the application are very misleading as they do not show the vessels that are currently docked and the problems that will be caused to the vessel docked at the existing boat shed, number one, as noted on the plan, to the north-east of the proposal. The large catamarans that are docked at the Moti Yacht Club on the same side are also a significant obstacle if the, if the permit is approved. I would strongly recommend and encourage councillors and, council laws, no Alderman anymore, to visit the site before assessing the application to see firsthand the impracticality of this application in its current form. It is also the club's intention not to grant membership for parking, which is also included in the application. My question is, what marine design guidelines have council used to assess the application?
Thank you, thank you, Mr Beard. Mr Graham or, oh, Mr Lovell, thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor, the application is live, it's under assessment and has recently been advertised. At this point, there's no detailed assessment of the merits of the application being done and therefore no reference to any guidelines at all at this point other than the initial assessment against the scheme to ensure that the relevant information that was necessary to advertise it was provided.
Thank you. Mr Beard, have a second question?
Yes, thank you. And the offer is open, so come down, have a look. Over the, same address as when I said before, 44 Pindos Drive, Tranmere. Over the past five years, I've been corresponding with council around the development of Pindos Park, Tranmere. Although my sons are now too old to use the equipment for the playground that was proposed, I'm still advocating on behalf of the many children and families in the area. As way of history, council provided funding in the budgets on numerous occasions over several years, but the project was never delivered. I believe it is in this year's budget and we are now six months on and heading into summer and still no action. Tranmere is one of the highest growth areas on the northern shores with lots of young families and has no open space other than a rundown park in Pindos Drive. 12 months ago, the small kids' play infrastructure was removed, leaving just a fence. So a fence with pine barks, I don't know what you do with it, you just lock the kids in there and let them eat the pine bark. The area is overgrown and there are photos of regular sightings of tiger snakes posted on local Facebook page over the last three weeks to near the playground. My questions are, can council guarantee this project be delivered this financial year? And if so, when will work start?
Thank you, Mr Beard. Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Council's funded three playground play spaces to be constructed. Blossom Crescent Park has been, council has awarded this one and the contractor is due to commence in the first week of February. The South Arm Oval Park play space was advertised last weekend and the tenders close at the end of January. Then for council, I hope it would be in a position to assess in February. And then as soon as that tender closes, early February, we intend to advertise Pindos Park. The timing of construction with that is completely dependent upon the tenders we receive in terms of pricing and contract availability.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Ram. Three other questions without notice? Name and address, please.
Name, Michael Fig, Lordedale, Tasmania. Congratulations, everybody, for winning the elections. Well stood, well stand and I hope we see the shining lights from all of you. The question is, Mr Chairman, we've been told that there's a stormwater plant coming for Lordedale. Can you give an indication why it's well over a year late and when it's going to be open for public consultation, including the canal version of the outlets, please?
Thank you for your question, Mr Fig. I'll actually ask Mr Graham to answer that, please.
Mayor, so early next year, we will come to council with a summary of the stormwater management plans, which includes the priority listing of capital projects to improve the flood risk. Lordedale is amongst that one, which is potentially in 26 or 27. There's, we're not ready to consult with Lordedale community on that. Once I've informed council of the stormwater management plan's priority list, I can get feedback from councillors where to from there.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Any other questions? There being none, we'll move now on to deputations. Are there any deputations, Sir Yarke?
Thank you, Mayor. There are four deputations tonight. Our first deputation is from Ms Alison Turnock in relation to the development application for 22 Thompson Way.
So Ms Turnock, yes, stand there, please. So there's three minutes for your deputation, maximum of three minutes. And please state your name and address and the floor's yours.
Sure. Is there any opportunity to show our presentation?
I'm sorry, no.
No, okay, excellent, all right. So my name's Alison Turnock, I live at 21 Thompson Way, next to the proposed development of 22 Thompson Way. I've lived there since 2010. So I'm here speaking today on the behalf of myself and my partner Shannon McCoy, as well as my next door neighbours, Mike and Cathy McIntyre, who are unable to be here tonight because they're interstate. The other residents of Clifton Beach, Thompson Way and Clifton Beach are also unable to be here because we've got our Clifton Beach Estate Community Meeting tonight. So they're all at Clifton Beach Surf Club. So Mike and Cathy asked me to reiterate their concerns about the plan, including incomplete documentation, increased stormwater runoff due to percentage of hard surfaces of the proposed development, the effect of the raised dispersal bed on adjacent flood-prone areas and the potential damage to established neighbouring vegetation due to hydrology changes. Overall, we have issues with the documentation, incomplete advertising and inaccurate information included, the overdevelopment of the site, flooding including overflow pathways, wastewater management setback of the dwelling, impact vegetation, additional walkways to the beach and the value of the works. We understand that recent changes in planning processes include a change from the Clarence interim planning scheme to the Tasmania Planning Scheme Clarence, which exclude building approval process matters now such as coastal erosion and water management and that things, these things can no longer be considered for the planning process. However, what we remain concerned about that is still included in the planning process is the bulk, scale and setback. So in regards to setback according to the acceptable solution, dwellings must have a setback from side and rear boundaries of not less than five metres. And this is a quantitative measurement that is not met. So it goes to the performance criteria, which says that the dwelling might not cause an unreasonable loss of amenity to adjoining properties due to topography, size, shape and orientation setbacks, height, bulk and form and the character of the development in existing established properties. And I do not believe that P2, which is a qualitative measurement, has been met. In regards to setback, the setback of the proposed buildings and retaining walls along the boundary within five metres of the boundary equate to 49 metres of the boundary of the proposed development and my property. It's reported in the council report that there are similar setbacks of less than five metres in adjoining properties, none of which are more than five metres of an entire boundary, which includes my property to my adjoining neighbours and the properties adjoining Mike and Cathy's property as well. So that's a significant difference, five metres of boundary versus 50 metres of boundary. And these are often buildings that are orientated at an angle towards a fence with angled roofing, not sheer two metre tall walls along a boundary fence to an adjoining property, which the council report itself says will shade my bedroom, one of two in the house, until 11 o'clock every morning, which is also a house that's passively designed so that the heating of the house relies on that sun.
Thank you, Ms Turnock. That's time. Thank, thank you. Please feel free to circulate that presentation to elected members if you'd like to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next deputy is Mr David Traynor in relation to the development application for 30 Cremonne Avenue.
Good evening, Mr Mayor. Congratulations to everybody getting elected, fantastic. As you'd appreciate, I had a special interest in the election. My name's David Traynor, I live at 32 Cremonne Avenue, which is next door to the DA. And I find myself in the situation of having to raise objections to the DA because of side boundary setback, rear boundary setback, bulk, height and significant overshadowing. Now, I know the report covers all these things and in many cases, there's a very slight difference in terms of the amount of side setback. But the point is that the, there is a deck on my side that doesn't count for side setback that's going almost to the boundary, which is of a significant height above looking down into our backyard. Now, look, that is not the intention when talking about side boundary setbacks, to have to include decks. The building, as you've noticed from the design, is two separate buildings with a connecting walkway to make it look like one building, which means the bulk of the building is significantly increased if you include the, I think they call them planter boxes in the middle, which are quite significant in terms of size, plus the large deck on my side that's, again, quite significantly large. So the amount of site coverage certainly far exceeds the 30% that's required. As you all know, Cremonne is a very nice little town. There are very few large buildings in there and the nature of the town was protected in the good old days by the village zoning. Making myself sound older now, Mr Mayor. But of course, now everything is under the state planning arrangements and the low-density zoning allows these sorts of developments. That will totally change the nature of Cremonne over time, undesirably in my humble opinion. And the nature will change to such an extent that it'll become just another Tranmere with those massive great buildings. Now, Mr Mayor, of course, my neighbours are perfectly entitled to do a development, to add on, to increase the size of their building and many of my neighbours further afield have done so and often with very sympathetic developments. But this one is basically just flat sides, bulking out our neighbourhood. And you will note that all the immediate neighbours have objected to this for the same sorts of reasons. Anyway, I just want to finish, Mr Mayor, by congratulating you all for getting elected again because obviously I realise it's an important thing and I wish you well for the next four years and I hope I don't have to come back to this microphone again.
Thank you, Mr Traynor.
Our third deputation is from Mr Ted Taylor in relation to the 30 Cremonne Avenue DA.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I've just got a photo circulating.
Thank you, Mr Taylor.
Start, okay. Good evening, everybody. My, my purpose in speaking is to elaborate on the combined representation that my wife and I have submitted in relation to the DA for 30 Cremonne Avenue. We reside at 32 Pikeley Espinade and the rear of our property therefore is directly aligned with the rear of 30 Cremonne Avenue. We are retirees. One of the attractions of the original purchase of our property is the current beautiful amenity and privacy of our back area and gardens. We simply wish to continue to enjoy that particular amenity. We quickly realised the overwhelming direct impacts of this proposal on our amenity. Contrary to section 5.6 of the council's planning officers' report, our amenity, including our privacy, will be significantly compromised by this proposal. The proposed development comprises a very large, high-rise extension adjacent to the existing building. Our property will be directly affected by this proposal because the resulting extension will comprise a towering two-storey building that will totally overlook the rear space of our property. It will be very visibly intrusive from both inside and outside our home, resulting in a significant dilution of amenity and private lifestyle that we currently enjoy. Councillors, performance criteria A2P2, section 10.4.3, sorry if I sound bureaucratic, of the planning scheme specifically states that the sighting of a dwelling must not cause an unreasonable loss of amenity to adjoining properties, having regard to height, bulk and form of the proposed buildings. This particular performance criteria is not even quoted anywhere in the planning officer's report despite the fact that in our case, we submitted a representation that largely focused on this criteria. We are therefore of the opinion that this is a serious omission of planning detail in this report and as a result, our concerns have not been properly addressed. Notwithstanding this omission, we firmly contend that the proposed development has not demonstrated beyond a reasonable level that the dwelling will not cause an unreasonable loss of amenity to our property. The planning officer's report mentions that the proposed upper-level deck of this extension will be set back nine metres from the rear boundary between our two properties and that this is considered sufficient distance to ensure that our privacy is not compromised. We strongly disagree with this finding. The photo in front of you that we've handed out illustrates our point. This is the view from our back area towards 30 Cremonne Avenue. The ground floor of the extension will be about the same height as the chimney of the existing building and a second storey will be built on top of that. The upper deck of that storey will totally overlook our property and the owners will have continuous direct line of sight of our back space at close quarters. If this doesn't constitute an unreasonable loss of amenity in terms of the planning scheme, then we don't know what does. In addition, our property has an area of just 592 square metres. It is obvious that any extension such as that proposed will be highly visible. I've just got a couple more lines, is that okay?
I'm sorry, Mr Taylor, it's a hard finish, but thank you.
Well, I hope my message is pretty clear.
I think you've done a great job.
We recommend it's not, it's not accepted.
Thank you, Mr Taylor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our fourth deputation tonight is Mr Thomas Chick in relation to the notice of motion put forward by councillor Chong.
Back in March, I said that I was waiting on the arrival of the 2021 Census data to confirm some predictions I had made about religion in Clarence and Australia more broadly. That the combination of people expressing no religion or not adequately answering the question would reach a majority in Clarence and just barely miss in the rest of the country. As I so like to be, I was right. Blame young people if you want, it is our fault. We're not sorry, to be clear. It didn't matter on the night. As I'd been writing my deputation, an agenda brief happened, feedback was given and the motion had somewhat changed in nature by the time it was moved at court past nine on the Monday. I don't really blame anyone for this. I agree that the original motion probably didn't have the legs to pass in the old council. Moving the acknowledgement of country up the order was a great and obviously correct move, but a cursory look over workshop sections of the intervening minutes tells me that that workshop on alternatives to the council prayer never eventuated. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong there, but we have this new motion in front of us, so it seems rather moot now. The convictions I had in March remain. I'd like to thank those who provided a history of the council prayer and corrected my misconception of the denominational quality thereof. Now, admittedly, my worldview is biased by the way I was brought up, but whether it is a generic prayer or not, I think we would all agree that in this field, appearances are very important. And again, as I said in March, it doesn't matter. As a secular body in a secular and increasingly irreligious society, no level of government in Australia should be opening their meetings with a religious observance of any kind. This is not to say you should not observe if you so feel in your own time, but religion and politics are like oil and water, to be kept well away from each other. The complaints I heard that night, we have processes for this, this is policy on the run, what are the Christians supposed to do? And all the while, the processes don't visibly seem to be turning over and the Christians continue to be unoppressed, though I thought we weren't bringing them into it. The time was right for this simple change, this removal of one insignificant five-word line from the meeting procedures, a watered-down milquetoast plea to no-one in particular eight months ago and eight years ago and many years ago besides and remains right now. Assuming it has not again changed out from under me, I wholeheartedly commend the motion to council. For the record, a copy of the text of this deputation and some supplementary material was forwarded to councillors at 7pm on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chick. I now advise that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act and to deal with the first item on our agenda, item 7.1, development application for 22 Thompson Way, Clifton Beach. Is there a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Hume, is there a second up for the recommendation? Councillor Walker? Thank you. Councillor Hume?
We've had in relation to this, we've had a deputation in relation to this matter. When we deal with these issues as a planning authority, it's, one of the things to understand is that in terms of interpreting the performance criteria on the planning scheme, while there are particular words in the criteria that could be interpreted in a number of ways and that those words, the way they're interpreted can be rather objective, there are also a number of tribunal decisions that have given some definition to those words, some further definition to what's actually written in the scheme. And that's what the planning staff draw on when they provide their recommendations. Now, an example of this is in regards to overshadowing and the representative who spoke on this development application mentioned overshadowing. I can understand that if somebody has a habitable room and the sun to that room is cut off in the morning, that that's obviously of great frustration to them. But the tribunal has determined that if you have solar access during three hours of the day, and they've upheld that decision time and time again, that that is not considered to be unreasonable overshadowing. That's the definition that the tribunal have given and the tribunal generally, even though they're not required to follow precedent, must have a very good reason to overturn precedent and will generally draw on previous decisions in their guidance on future decisions. So that's the definition they provided and that's the one that's been used when the planning staff have considered the application compliant with that particular criterion. So while I empathise with the representative and, you know, I understand that the frustration that a lot of people have when it comes to these issues and also the provisions of the statewide planning scheme, we have an obligation as a council to consider the guidance that the tribunal has given us because if these issues end up going to the tribunal, then they will tend to follow the same pattern. Thank you.
Councillor Walker?
Yes, look, everything councillor Hume has said and I think that the representatives tonight have reasons to feel deflation in how the planning scheme that we operate and work under now has changed over time and reasons to be disappointed around the gravity and weight put to matters such as coastal erosion and order. But I'm sitting as a member of the planning authority, we're all sitting as members of the planning authority, and I don't see as a member of the planning authority grounds sufficient for refusal. And that in no way is me washing my hands of the fact that this is a significant application and will have a material impact on those neighbours. But this is, as I sit, this is a decision I make after reading the report and as such, I feel compelled to be the seconder in the absence of anyone else.
Thank you, Councillor Walker. Anyone else? Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor Blomley. I concur with the previous speakers with regards to how we sit as a planning authority. However, I won't be supporting this, but I can't offer an alternative because the planning scheme as it sits doesn't allow me to. But we must be aware that this is a very fragile area. Anyone that knows anywhere near the estate at Clifton will understand that this area must be protected. I feel very hamstrung here. All I can do is not support it, but I can't, I'm sorry colleagues, offer an alternative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kennedy. Anyone else wish to, councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I too have concerns about this development and I thank the representative for her contribution. It's important to me to understand that your property is built on passive solar and to me, that suggests that if your habitable room, the room that you wake up in, is not receiving sunlight for the first two hours of the day, that that's actually going to be a cost to this household because there might be a requirement to use other forms of heating. So I don't think there's anything in the planning scheme that allows us to deal with that and certainly there is if you have a building that's overshadowing solar panels, that certainly does come into it. I see no mention of that in this report. My other concern is, as my colleague or councillor Kennedy has raised, is the coastal erosion. And I particularly noted the point in the report about concerns that this property would access the beach directly over the sand dunes and that seemed to be dismissed and said, no, there are walkways either side that this property will use. I guess that remains to be seen. We had a similar development in Cremorne, which I actually looked at, revisited yesterday, which has four properties conjoined and we were assured that those people would use the side walkways and not go directly out their front door and over the dunes. I remain sceptical that will be the case as I have concerns here. I think we do need to do better in this sensitive area. So like my, like the previous speaker, I have concerns, I have no alternative to offer, but I'm not comfortable with this proposal.
Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Mulder?
Thank you. I often rise on these particular things to say that we sit as a planning authority. I take those points on board. What we are is sitting here is, we are not acting in the representative, in the interest of the community. As such, we are acting to administrators of a planning scheme. The reality of that means that we have to apply a planning scheme as if we were bureaucrats, not elected representatives. And that is a problem to me because I was elected here and I was elected to be a spokesman. And if I have to sit here and do it, let's get back to the specifics. We sit here to take the public appropriate for what is a government policy that must be applied according to the rules the government set up. So that's where we find this argument about we're a planning authority. Then it comes as a planning authority where we have the acceptable solutions and we wouldn't even be talking about this, this wouldn't even come to council if the development was fully compliant with the planning scheme, the objective criteria. But then we've got this overlay which talks about the performance criteria, which are the subjective elements about if it doesn't meet this, when we're still allowed because these performance criteria. Now, my concern is that we take each of these performance criteria in total isolation. Here we have a long, narrow block in a coastal area and a planning scheme that basically says with a performance criteria, you can pretend this is a standard, you know, 20 metre by 60 metre suburban quarter acre lot and therefore, but the performance criteria says because it's not, you then can fiddle with the side setbacks. And in this case, we are fiddling with the side setbacks and bulk and scale. Now, it just seems to me a little bit rich that you can't, given the nature of the block, given the nature of the locality, given the fact that it's a beachside area that was principally shacks and single-storey dwellings, why do you have to breach both with your development application? Why do you have to go and infringe on both the setbacks and the height and scale? Surely there's got to be some grounds. Once again, I won't be supporting this, but once again, can I say that at least by not supporting this, by not having an alternative, we are representing back to the government the displeasure with its planning scheme under the Land Use Planning Approvals Act, which is one of its principles says that it will engage, it will give a voice to the community and then it promptly chops it off once the planning scheme is in place. So I won't be supporting this and I really do, I would like to see some criteria that says you can breach two, but not three of the acceptable solutions to allow the performance criteria because this is a matter of design, not a matter of planning.
Are there any other speakers? Thank you, Alvin James. Oh, councillor Chang?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is disappointing that the last three speakers said they didn't have an alternative. Now, I find that quite extraordinary because in the circumstances, I left it to some of our colleagues who've been here a while and who know that an alternative motion, given the significance of this development, would get some legs in relation to not supporting this particular recommendation and that is for refusal and by providing the necessary reasons for why that is the case. If we refer to page 74 of the officer's report, it says, and I quote, "low-density residential zone. The proposed dwelling, secondary residence and outbuilding." It's very important we know what's going to be built on this block. "The proposed dwelling, secondary residence and outbuilding have a side setback of less than five metres." This is a narrow block, extremely narrow, and on page 75 of the officer's report, when we're talking about the size, shape and orientation of the site. The site is a long, relatively narrow site with a width of 13 metres at the northern boundary, which increases to 29 at the southern boundary. The relative narrowness of the lot results in the setbacks being difficult to achieve, particularly in the northern part of the site. So you have already an attempt to actually challenge the performance criteria or the acceptable solutions by putting forward a recommendation that does not address the side setbacks. And we heard this evening that this is going to be one of the key factors in this particular matter. And if it goes to a higher authority, which maybe go to the planning tribunal, then it may be looked at in that context because the sheer bulk and scale of three buildings on a very narrow block in a very pristine area of our city, you know, backing onto one of the best beaches in Tasmania and worldwide known for that purpose. And by having overdevelopment, bulk, scale and size of this is really detracting from what I believe as a planning authority we're here about. I will not be supporting this, but I took a backseat on this particular case and I thought that there may have been one or two of us in here because I was sitting down at Mood Food yesterday afternoon, talking to a fellow councillor. And I thought, really? Surely someone will put up a recommendation in this particular case because of the very nature and the concerns about this particular development. And having said that, the basis of a planning scheme, and it's covered in the introductory card of this officer's report, and it states 4.2, "In determining the application for any permit for use, development, the planning authority must, in addition to the matters required by Section 51.2 of the Act, take into consideration all applicable standards and requirements in this planning scheme and any representations received pursuant to the conformity with Section 57, but in the case of exercise at discretion," this is the important bit, "insofar, only insofar as each matter is relevant to the particular discretion being exercised." Now, one colleague mentioned earlier that if this had have been done in accordance with a planning scheme, it wouldn't come here. But the opponent wants to make a change. He wants, or she, let's not get into, you know, the nature of their request in this place, but they want to seek council's discretion to deviate from the planning scheme because of the number of buildings and the sheer bulk and scale of this development and, you know, varying the setbacks in order to be able to enable this particular development to proceed. It is disappointing and I would have more than happy been able to second a refusal motion because I think this is wrong. This recommendation is inappropriate. It's not in accordance with what I believe is appropriate within the planning scheme. So anyway, let's see what happens with the vote. If it's lost, then we've got to make a decision, Mr Mayor, one way or the other and therefore, if it's going to be, I think.
Thank you, thank you, councillor James. Before I ask a further speaker, so we'll just make the point that councillor James and others will be well aware of, and that is that a rejection of the recommendation is a non-decision with no alternate motion to replace it. It will be then dealt with under delegation to avoid significant costs if we miss the 42-day deadline that councillors will be aware of. Councillor Walker, do you have a question?
Just for clarity, I understand when that happens in the instance of a non-decision being a six-all vote, but just for total clarification for me, you're saying that will also occur in the situation where a refusal hasn't been generated by anyone around the table?
That's my understanding, yes. So thank you, councillor James. Is there anyone, any other councillors wish to contribute? So, um, thank you councillor James. Are there anyone, any other councillors wish to contribute, uh, to the debate on this issue? There being none, uh, back to the mover for a right of reply. Thank you councillor Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I like, uh, I'm sure everyone else around the table has, has read the report in detail. And, uh, you know, regardless of the arguments of councillor James, I do believe that it complies with the performance criteria um, in relation to the height, bulk and form, um, of existing proposed buildings. And there is also a criteria, um, in relation to, uh, other comparable developments. I can't remember the exact wording of it in, in the area. Um, the planning staff have noticed that there are, uh, developments in, in the area of similar height, bulk and form. Um, but having said that, uh, look, I, I think it's, I think it's disappointing. Um, if, you know, we, if we, if we vote down the motion to, um, you know, to approve this development, um, I, I do really think it, it's incumbent on councillors who wish to go against an officer's recommendation to, to have an alternative motion. You can actually ask the planning staff to, to draft the alternative motion um, and explain, explain your arguments to them and have it based on those arguments in the appropriate form. Um, so I, I encourage you, uh, in any subsequent meeting, if that's, if that's the way you're going to go, um, to ask the planning staff for that alternative motion. Um, because really, uh, it, it's incumbent on us to make a decision, whatever that decision is. Um, and I think it's unfortunate when we don't, um, you know, that, that's our, that's our role as a planning authority. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hume. So I'll put the motion, that is that the development application for dwelling, secondary residence and outbuilding, 22 Thompson's Way, Clifton Beach, be approved, subject to conditions and advice. I'll put that motion. All those in favour? Those against? The motion is lost.
Can I just have a moment?
Yes, we just, excuse my mind, we'll just take, I'll just take some advice. Thank you. Uh, councillors, I call on the CEO to provide an explanation for us, please.
Uh, thank you. Uh, having conferred with Mr. Lovell, um, the process moving forward in the absence of an alternate motion coming before council tonight for refusal and that being approved, uh, will be that, uh, Mr. Lovell will seek an extension of time from the proponents, uh, to a time post the next meeting. Uh, and if that is not forthcoming, we will be obligated to exercise our delegation and approve the development in accordance with the recommendation uh, within that 42 day period which currently stands.
Thank you, CEO. All right, moving on now to, um, agenda item 7.2, which is a development application for 30 Cremona Avenue, Cremona. I'll, um, seek a mover for the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Hume. A seconder? Thank you councillor, uh, Walker. Uh, councillor Hume?
Um, Mr. Mayor, similar sort of proposal and similar sort of arguments, um, so I won't go over them. But, um, I did want to just, uh, ask a question. I understand that one of the, one of the representatives referred to a, um, uh, performance criteria that was, uh, uh, not addressed in the planning report. And I just wanted to ask through you to Mr. Lovell, um, if that was because the, uh, and I, I believe if I heard correctly, it was 10.43 P2, um, if, if that was because the, um, relevant acceptable solution was made.
Thank you councillor Hume. Uh, Mr. Lovell?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the only, uh, performance criteria which are referred to in the report, uh, those that correspond to the acceptable solution which is breached, which in this case is 10.4.3 A1.
Thank you, Mr. Lovell. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, look, without going into detail about it, I have read the, um, uh, performance criteria, uh, in detail and, um, I believe that the planning staff have, um, you know, done a, uh, an excellent job, um, addressing them. Um, I understand that there are concerns in relation to, um, size, bulk and scale. Uh, once again, um, my understanding from reading it was that this development, um, like the previous one, uh, did have, um, similar developments in the area, developments in the area of similar size, bulk and scale. Um, but, uh, I, I believe it is compliant with the performance criteria.
Thank you councillor Hume. Councillor Walker?
Everything councillor Hume said and. Um, 34 years ago, as my grade seven was coming to an end, uh, we caught the bus down and spent the day at, uh, at Cremona. No doubt listened to Rick Astley on the way down as it was his big year, number one. Uh, we had a swim. The shop was still open at the time. The ice creams were still affordable. And I bring this up because Cremona was magnificent then. And really up until the last, probably even two years, there's been little change in, in what has been a nice sleepy coastal hamlet. And the first major change to this proposal came several years ago, uh, on a site deemed commercial, which included a, uh, few levels on top of it. And, uh, when that came to the last term of council, I thought there were grounds for refusal. We were advised otherwise. And I think, uh, the community at that time were given, uh, unwittingly a real sense of false hope. And I think potentially that is what's about to happen as we discuss this motion as well. Again, the area zoning has changed as planning schemes have changed. And what the planning scheme says is acceptable has materially changed. And I look at the photo and the impact again is real. Were there some grounds potentially to try and push on this? Perhaps. But again, the courtesy of refusal motion wasn't discussed or circulated. Was there the ability to perhaps pass it but provide small degrees of comfort with some extra points added to the application that we are passing now as per the officer's recommendation? There possibly are. But again, those potential tangible steps haven't been bothered. So I'll now hear the, the, the contributions of some of my colleagues, I expect. And there may be something that sways me from my current point, which is that we have to approve it. But I think it's very disappointing if we're going to have a Kabuki situation of, um, not approving it so that it actually still gets approved. That, I, 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 I don't see what, what that's actually doing for the representatives. I don't know what that's doing for council. Being a member of the planning authority can be one of the most frustrating. In fact, it is the most frustrating element of being on council. We signed up for it. Most of us campaigned very hard to be part of it. It's the job, not always a fun bit.
Thank you councillor Walker. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you to everyone who came along tonight and gave deputations. I think it's great to see people engaged with the process. Similar to what councillor Mulder said earlier, proponents can meet the acceptable solution. People will test that and that's what they're doing here. And I have real concerns with 10.4.3 P1, which is the size and shape of the site and that it doesn't meet the 30%. I think this is our opportunity to not accept it. Unfortunately, being new to this, I didn't come with an alternative, um, recommendation. Um, because I thought maybe some of the other colleagues might be able to lead the way in that. So I'm sorry for not being forthright with that here, but I cannot support this motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Councillor Darko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to everyone who came today to speak, um, with regards to this development application. Um, similarly to councillor Hunter, I wasn't fully aware of the procedures. So I didn't know how to, um, uh, draft a refusal. Um, but one of my biggest concerns with this is, um, with regards to part D of 10.4.3 P1, um, I believe that the, uh, the height, bulk and form of the proposed development is out of step with the surrounding properties. Down here we have reference to, um, next door property at 32 Cremona, which has a second story, um, completely different to the second story on this development application. And yeah, not sure where to go from here, but I would like everyone around the room to consider that it's really not actually in step with the character of the surrounding properties.
Thank you councillor Darko. Councillor Mulder?
Thank you. I'll just add some clarification. By, these are matters that our planning scheme is an instrument of the Minister for Planning. Under the legislation passed by the state parliament, this is the, the Clarence Planning Scheme is not signed by the mayor and the general manager. It's signed by the state government minister for planning. It's our job under the planning scheme to implement that planning scheme. And we have no real discretion to vary the planning scheme in the way it's applied. My point is that this thing fails on a number of occasions. Side coverage is excess and you have the setbacks and you have the over, and the overbearing. And each of these performance criteria are a rubber edge allowing, um, discretion. My argument is, is that just how many of these do you breach before fundamentally the project is one that doesn't suit the block, the land, the size, the scope, the, the objectives? And the answer is, um, on previous decisions of the commission, endless. There's endless discretion to take subjective criteria, assess them against them. And our role here isn't, I, I, I could possibly draft an alternative for this, but I know it wouldn't have the legs. And if it doesn't have the legs, we will get to first base and someone will tell us it doesn't have legs. Withdraw it. We've been, the last council's been through this a few times. The way we've got over this is where a decision hasn't been made, as the mayor so and the general manager, CEO has accurately pointed out, is that where we are not able to make a positive decision, then it's gone to the delegation to the officer's report because they are the experts in the planning scheme, et cetera, et cetera. To me, that is a very neat way. But I'll remind colleagues that were at the previous council that I tried to regularize this so we didn't have to go through the nonsense of asking people. And it was resoundingly voted down as not appropriate. So we're left with a delegation that in the CEO's own words is being applied in a way it wasn't really intended, but that's the way it's being applied. And to me, this is a great out for us. It's a great out for us to say, yes, it conforms to the planning scheme, but it's an opportunity for us to say, we don't like it. And your planning scheme is far too rubbery. And this is a way of us saying, yes, the developer can have his development. But at the same time, we need to be hammering home to the state government that their planning schemes do not have the acceptance of the community that they thought, that they assume they have. Because they put the planning scheme out and it's all a great big hustle and bustle. And no one ever realizes the implications of the details if someone wants to do this next door to them. So I'm all for the case of saying, yes, vote it down, but don't have an alternative because it hasn't got the technical legs. But what we're doing is the development will be approved as the planning scheme requires it to be. But at the same time, we can make a point that we don't like it.
Are there any other speakers? Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I took the opportunity to visit this property yesterday, as I believe did about four of my colleagues. And I thoroughly recommend to new councillors that you do take the opportunity to go and visit a property whenever we have something like this that can be contentious. Because there's no substitute for seeing it in person. And I do thank Mr. and Mrs. Taylor for their time yesterday. Um, I'm particularly interested in what we're seeing on the screen at the moment with part two there, which says, um, that the plans have been amended to show a permanently fixed screen to the lower level deck on the western side, providing privacy to the property on that side. And I'm just wondering why perhaps that wasn't also recommended for this. Because if you look at this photo here, you can see that, um, this private space is now going to be overlooked by a, a second story. And it's possible that with a privacy screen, that property would be looking across the roof rather than down into the garden and the living space. Although of course there would be a significant overshadowing still. But, uh, one of the things that really distresses me whenever we see something like this is where you're in a neighbourhood which is, it used to be a village, it's still got a bit of a village feel. It's a community and somebody puts in a development without talking to the neighbours. So many of the issues that we deal with in this council could be dealt with by some just good old fashioned communication between neighbours and some willingness to, to live and work with people who, who are going to be on the boundary of your properties. And maybe, um, if we had an additional condition, which I don't think we can do as part of this process, um, this would be less of an impact because make no mistake, it's going to be a huge impact on this property. Um, as well as on the, the neighbouring one, which again, we're told that it's quite reasonable by according and reasonable being a technical term, not a common sense one, that it's reasonable to have no sunlight to your livable rooms in the morning from nine till 12 o'clock. Um, I don't find that reasonable. I'm, it's unfortunate that the tribunal does. Um, so once again, I find that there are problems with this, um, that could perhaps have been addressed, um, but haven't been. So it falls short of what I would expect.
Thank you councillor Warren. Councillor James?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, again, I rise to refer council to page 101 of the officer's report. And low-density residential zone. And it's the golden clause which centers on this debate. 10.4.3 A1 of the acceptable solutions and the debate against those with the performance criteria. If it, in the end it wins and therefore the recommendation is approved on the officer's recommendation. But the proposal, lower deck, level deck would be setback 0.6 metres from the western side boundary and dwelling addition setback from the western boundary. That is where the setback comes into play. The proposed variation therefore must be considered in accordance with the performance criteria. The officers have even said in their, uh, performance criteria on page 102B, the subject site is a rectangular shaped lot with a land area of 723 square metres, which is below, which is below the minimum size, lot size of 1500 for the low-density residential zone. So it doesn't meet the low-density residential zone because of the size of, of the land is in question. And therefore it makes it very difficult, I'm quoting here on page 102, part B, and it making it very difficult, making it difficult for the proposal to meet the standard site and rear setbacks. Now, the site and rear setbacks are really, uh, dependent upon whether or not the amenity, the development is oversized and, and help, again, height, bulk and scale. You see, the second or the addition to the exist, existing building, and again on page 103, is to be retained with the addition located to the rear with the rep- is to be retained with the addition located to the rear with the proposed addition setback approximately 10 metres from the current front section, so that the building bulk is set back a total of 17 metres from the strict frontage. It doesn't address where the second story is, and that's in close proximity to number 30 Pipe Clay Esplanade, which is going to impact on their private open space, it's going to take away their amenity, which they, I believe, are entitled to like anybody else. And therefore it does not address that particular area of again, size, shape, scale, and also the amenity of the area. Now, throughout this particular dissertation, that the performance criteria has been compared to the acceptable solutions, it talks about this is not comparable with other buildings in the site. It is a change. It is a huge site change in relation to that second story. And it's so close to the existing buildings, and the site setbacks have not been addressed in relation to this. Again, I believe this is an inappropriate development, and I really don't want to have this sort of perception that councillor James is so negative when he comes into this place. And that seems to be coming through loud and clear over the last...
Thirty years.
Not thirty years, I can tell you. I've made some changes over the thirty years which have really benefited the city. Alderman, councillor Walker. But look, now let's not digress. The simple fact of the matter is, this is not in keeping with, thanks, Mr Mayor, it's not in keeping with the amenity of the area, it's out of kilter with the size, shape, and it does not meet the side setbacks either for the people who live on a Pipe Clay Esplanade or the adjoining property owners. I seek my colleagues to not support this particular motion, and there may be an opportunity for this to be reconsidered at another time where there may be an alternative put up. Alternatively, we may come to the view that this is particularly need to be supported, and that may come out in the wash if the chief executive officer is going to take a similar line if this is refused.
Thank you, councillor James. Are there any other councillors wishing to speak on this matter? Right of reply, councillor Hugh.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I commend councillor James for his efforts to to put forward an argument that the development is going to apply to performance criteria. It's not an argument I agree with, but I do believe that, you know, having stood for election to this council and having been elected, and knowing that we would have to serve as members of a planning authority, I believe it's a job that we need to take very seriously. But we have frustrations with the planning scheme. We have frustrations with how permissible it is, we have frustrations with the fact that with the implementation of the statewide planning scheme, we have essentially a cookie cutter approach to development in a lot of areas where, you know, one style of development might be appropriate for a regular suburban residential area, but might not for another. And also frustrations with the fact that the Tasmanian Planning Commission has been very reluctant to accept the implementation of local controls, and has even abandoned some local controls that we've had under previous schemes. I get those frustrations. But having said that, I don't believe it's a good outcome to have something go to the tribunal if, you know, we know it's not going to be accepted by, our argument's not going to be accepted by the tribunal. That just prolongs the pain and results in more costs. And I don't believe it's a good outcome to have a non-decision. If we believe we have a genuine, we can have a genuine crack at something and go against the officer's recommendation in the genuine belief that can succeed, and there are times when we have succeeded with, you know, decisions. And when I was on previous on council, there were a couple of decisions I went against the planning officer's recommendation. I can't actually remember whether the tribunal accepted those or not, but, you know, I think we need to, you know, be very serious about our role here and do our job with the diligence that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hugh. I put the motion in that the development application for additions and alterations to dwelling at 30 Cremon Avenue, Cremon, be approved subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? Those against? Well, two for two. So that's declared lost. I now advise that council concludes its deliberation as sitting as a planning authority and move on to item eight of our agenda, reports of officers. There being no petitions table at previous council meetings, eight point two, nothing under asset management. Move on to eight point three, financial management, and note that the CEO wishes to table the annual financial statements. Thank you, CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. I wish to formally table the audited financial statements for the past financial year, which will be included in the annual report and presented to the annual general meeting on the fifth of December.
Thank you very much. Moving now on to eight point four of our agenda, eight point four point one, partnership grants. The recommendation is that council approves the distribution of a partnership grant totaling $12,000. Councillor Chong. Thank you. Move by councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy seconded that. Thank you. Councillor Chong.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would like to move the recommendation that we support the grant of $12,000 to the Rotary College Springboard Kazuna Drummers, and the non-recommendation for the other grants that were applied for. Partnership grants are intended to be a way that council helps community groups work on projects that benefit the Clarence community. It comes, as all of these kind of grants do, with a range of criteria and requirements. The applications are all considered by a large group of external people with knowledge and expertise, internal staff and two councillors, currently councillor Wendy Kennedy and I. Like planning meetings, I always go into these discussions with an open mind. I read all the information we get, and believe me, there is a large amount of information, but often find my expected viewpoint completely changed when I listen to the other contributions. Throughout the process, the goal is to fund the projects that comply, but also to provide useful feedback to those that we don't fund. Sometimes, as can be seen in the reports here, some don't comply with the criteria. Sometimes the proposal needs working on a bit more or tweaking. Always, there are detailed letters that go back to the proponents to assist in understanding why they didn't get the full amount or the grant, as is recommended here for the Taker drummers, or why the application was refused. Some in the chamber may be disappointed by the ones that were not recommended for funding this time, but part of the process is to help people understand what they can do to stand a better chance next time. I don't know if these grants will be in the same format next year, as we've committed to look at the whole range of grants going forward. But I believe this is the right outcome from this grant round, and I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor Chong. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't actually going to say anything because I think councillor Chong's pretty much covered it. But it is a long process and something that we all take very seriously. And I think if you read the report that's provided to you, you'll get a clear understanding as to why some people weren't successful. It's a compliance with guidelines issue the majority of the time, but we do provide feedback to help people with their coming back and trying again, so we seek council's support.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution? Councillor Hugh.
Just wanted to say that as a former member of the partnership grants committee, I don't envy your job, and I commend you for it. It's a difficult decision, particularly when you find there's a number, what makes it especially difficult is when you go through, first of all, the questions of compliance, and you still have a number of applications that, you know, are above the amount of funding available. It's tough, and, you know, I remember some very robust discussions around that table when I was on the committee. And it'd be lovely to be able to give, you know, have an endless bucket of money to give to everyone who wants one of these grants. But the idea is for the money there, you try and maximise the benefit of the community. And I think the panel has done a great job in selecting an excellent project. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hugh. Anyone else wish to? That being the case, I'll put the motion. The recommendation is that council approves the distribution of a partnership grant totaling $12,000 to Rosney College Springboard Kazuna Drummers. I'll put that motion. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving now on to general item eight point four point two, test networks creation of easement. This will require an absolute majority of council as it's a decision regarding the disposal of public land. I'll call for a mover of the motion, please. Thank you, councillor James. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Walker. Councillor James.
I seek council support.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Walker.
I think from memory that we don't actually come away with less land from this.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a contribution here? I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving now on to item eight point four point three, again, disposal of public land at Duntrun Drive. I'll call for a mover of this motion, please. Thank you, councillor Mulder. Is there a second? Thank you, councillor Walker. Councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And yes, I move, I think it's a, it is a good idea. It's certainly not the best outcome. I would have thought that some of this land would have been really good as part of public open space, but we missed a huge opportunity last year, in the last council, and that was when the block of land, and Mr Howie at that stage, it actually strongly pushed us to acquire this block of land, which was on the, which was actually on the waterfront. And it was actually would have connected through some, what is already the Creek Valley area there, and we would have had a lovely park area, but, and then we went through, and that park area would have connected through this piece of land to the beachfront, to a very safe swimming beach. But no, we decided that we wanted factories and all sorts of other things, and we passed up an opportunity to what would have created a signature piece. And I think Alderman James at the time was pushing for us to do this because it would have been a great location for a regional park with a waterfront, with a creek, with a beach, and all those sorts of things. But that is history, and is actually not relevant to this. Having missed that opportunity, and we will now see some warehouses go up there if my last bit of intel was correct, then it's, then this is an appropriate piece of land to move across as indicated. So I encourage support, and every now and then when these opportunities arise, can I just ask councils to think about, and I'm sure this council will be much better than the last one, about the strategic implications of increasing land that is actually relevant to public use, and stop flogging it off to private.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Councillor Walker.
Look, I think more housing is an abuse of this land, and it makes sense the way that we're going to go forward in the circumstances that we have, so I look forward to this being passed.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Darker.
So I don't want to oppose this, but I just want to raise some concerns that were aired to me when I met with a member of the community who actually organised a petition against this. She didn't actually oppose this at all. She was opposed to the fact that it had been done within, her view, inadequate consultation, that the sudden end of the site is adjacent to the wetland, does this have impact on birds? And that the alternative green spaces which were identified in the report are unkempt, that have trash in there and are currently unmoored. And she was just seeking more assurances from council on what we're actually doing here. I received some reassurances that we are looking at some of these issues with the master plan coming up. But yeah, I'd just like to highlight those concerns that I had raised.
Thank you, councillor Darker. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Disposing of public open space always raises red flags for me, having been an open space planner. I can see the strategic importance of this moving forward, having talked to my colleagues. I too have spoken to the resident that raised concerns, and I hope that moving forward, the state government will provide adequate tracks and trails for those new residents. Ideally, I would have liked to have seen that parcel of land on the southern end either been advertised on the public market for sale or retained into that other section of public open space. But even considering that, I will support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Anyone else wish to make a contribution? Councillor Mulder, your right of reply, please.
I think we all wish that we had the public open space, and as I said, I would be, if we had done that with the land on the beach, I'd be the first person to be moving for this to not happen. But as it is, it is there, it is a landlocked piece of equipment, and we all know that we are very short of housing space. I would really like, you know, I think that this is the next best appropriate use for this land, and under the circumstances, I'd encourage officers, I'd encourage my colleagues to support.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Colleagues, throw up with the motion, just a reminder that this will again require an absolute majority of council. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? And that's absolute majority. Thank you very much. Unanimous. Moving now on to item eight point four point four, the council meeting schedule that's been distributed. Call for a move to endorse this. Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Seconded councillor Chong. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor. As per the officer's, oh, the recommendation.
Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Anyone else wish to speak to this? Councillor James.
I have a question through you, Mr Mayor, to our chief executive officer. I'm trying to get used to that term from general manager. The Monday, the 16th of January, I would have thought there's a lot of people, families away, including a number of people around this table. Is that locked in stone or, what's the expression? Cut in stone or whatever? Thank you, deputy mayor. Cut, set in stone.
Thank you, CEO. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, councillor James. Through you, Mayor. The 16th of January date is set aside principally for any urgent planning items because of the 42 day statutory timeframe. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a meeting in January.
Any other questions, Alderman James? Any other contributions from colleagues? They're being done. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? That's unanimous again. Thank you very much. Moving now on to item nine, motions on notice. Councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I move the motion standing in my name.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderman. As councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I start by saying that the officers, that the CEO has provided very extensive commentary? I think the commentary, to read that commentary out would take longer than the time allotted for me to speak to my own motion. But the point of the exercise, of this exercise, is not to undo any of the work that's underway, not to suggest we do different work. The point of this exercise is to recognise that the work programme that was set up was set up at a time where we might need to have some rethink about whether it is future-proofed. Yes, Virginia, there is a climate emergency, even though this council in the last sessions hadn't agreed with one. And I think almost to a person, everyone campaigned on themes like positive actions on climate change. And when you look at our responsibilities, the one that's really impacted upon this is stormwater management, because that is definitely one of our responsibilities. And there is a huge impact of that on climate change. You don't have to go as far as New South Wales to see the impact of one in 20 year flood events that are happening twice and three times a year, to realise that our stormwater systems, the way we have them at the moment, rely on gravity, and it isn't working, especially in low lying areas. Now, the solution to these things is quite often is detention ponds with regulated outflows, artificial wetlands, swales, pump out systems. Now, it's not like these are totally innovative things that no one's ever seen before. Kingborough, in Kingston, have their stormwater coming from that particular catchment in the Brown River Catchment area. in the Brown River catchment area, goes through some great wetlands, right on the edge of the city. Everyone drives past them every day. And those wetlands perform a number of functions, including filtering the stuff that, you know, the detritus and the fecal matter that inevitably collects in stormwater and push it through a wetland, which means that in the end, it's A, held back in times of peak flooding, and B, the water quality is much cleaner. We have a pump-out system, for example, in one part of Seven Mile Beach. This part of Seven Mile Beach does not suffer all the water inundations that is occurring in other parts of Seven Mile Beach. So if we can pump it out in one part, why can't we pump it out into the other? And it doesn't have to be pumped out into the ocean. There are other things. We could have detention ponds back at Acton, in the areas that regularly flood. We have a huge area, wetland area, that is down at Cremona that could be used to take in excess stormwater. And it's not a question of moving it, it's a question of trying to mitigate the peaks. It's trying to stop the water from rushing all into one spot because that's where gravity leads it. And the idea is, is that we regulate that flow and to do it. So, I mean, the other day I was talking to John Stevens, the former and well-respected, might I say, city engineer. And we were talking about the Beet Street. And this week again, we've got the hassle about what are we doing about South Street? What are we doing about those areas in the city? And he had an innovative solution. And the solution wasn't that innovative at all. It was to build a detention pond about where is now Worksworth Park, where now is Worksworth, which has now got houses on it. But we could do the same under the Wentworth Street parks. All these areas, if you go back to the maps in the 1900s, early 1900s, were lagoons and swamps. We've built houses on them, and we wonder why with increasing rainfall, our drainage systems aren't working? So the idea was that you create these detention basins, you could build them underneath the parks, and you could do it. So really, it's all it's saying is flagging up is we need to lift our sights in the recognition of the fact that rainfall is happening, rainfall is going to become severe, and low-lying areas, particularly those in the beach, are not going to be draining should sea level rise occur because the aquifer will rise and you can't expect water to flow uphill. So my call is now, is to say, for all those people who believe we should take positive action on climate change, now is the time. This is in our bailiwick. Stormwater management is our bailiwick. It is what we are responsible for, and we should take action now to future-proof our stormwater systems.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I commend the mover of this motion. I think in the explanatory notes, point one was the clincher for me, straight up. I was part of the council that adopted the storm system, stormwater system management plan in 2019. It'll soon be 2023. And we've seen a number of flooding events during this time. Climate change is not waiting for anyone. And I know in the coastal regions in particular, people are screaming for reassurance and some sort of comfort to be given by this council. So I fully support this motion, and I seek the support of everyone around this table.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I also commend councillor Mulder for bringing this motion. One of the reasons I'm really proud to be a part of Clarence Council is that we had a financial officer with great insight a few years ago who realised that we were going to hit a peak in 20 years' time from that point, where we would need to replace a whole lot of infrastructure. And so started planning ahead for that, so we wouldn't be hitting our ratepayers with a huge bill at that time. So we've been planning a future fund, if you like, to allow for that so that we can replace the infrastructure, which was, you know, installed around about the time the bridge went down, 1975. And so it's all, a lot of infrastructure, all the same age, all going to fail around the same time. So we're now faced with a different sort of crisis. We're faced with climate change. We're hopeful that this council will actually see this as an urgent issue. And I think we need to take the same approach. We need to be bold, we need to look at what we can do to future-proof our community and our municipality so that our ratepayers don't get faced with a huge bill when we have to do it in a hurry at the last moment. So I commend this motion because it's saying, let's have a look at what's on the books. And I thank you to the CEO for providing comprehensive explanatory notes on what is actually happening. Let's have a look at that, but let's also think outside the square and look at what we could be doing. And then start to prioritise those things. We're coming into a budget cycle, this is the ideal time to say, if we want to be really aspirational and really do some good work here, we should be, you know, perhaps aiming to do one project per year. And that was probably more important than some of the other things that we've done in past years. So I'm really glad to see this as a report so that we can have that information and we can make decisions based on that information. And hopefully be a little bit bolder in our approach rather than business as usual, which is not working. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Warren. Any other speakers? Councillor Walker, my apologies.
Spot on. My question, I think more than speaking, I guess I'd like to ask questions probably through you and CEO to the head of engineering. What is the anticipated impact on staffing if the motion is successful to prepare the reports, et cetera?
CEO, you or Mr Graham?
Thank you, Mayor. I might refer to Mr Graham in the first instance. He can talk to any sort of technical issues regarding the programme. And then I'm happy to follow up in terms of any other resourcing issues.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
Through you, Mr Mayor. I mean, the report, sorry, the notice of motion, as indicated there, is to prepare a report on potential products, projects for future-proofing. But the report's going to be the basis of the stormwater management plans that council has adopted. As noted in the CEO's comments, if there's any change to that, then additional resources will be required. Council's only got one stormwater technical officer at the moment. We've got one stormwater engineer on secondment for delivering our programme. We've advertised four times this year for a stormwater engineer, which council has put in the budget. We haven't been able to fill. We have another engineer who's on maternity leave. So effectively, I've only got one full-time resource at the moment managing stormwater. And we're sharing it across all asset management resources and trying to deliver the programme as well as we can. But at the moment, as indicated, we'll be reporting on the S S N P. If you have any further outcomes from that, then we'll discuss at the time.
Thank you, Mr Graham. CEO, do you wish to add anything?
No, in hindsight, I don't think I need to.
Thank you very much. Councillor Walker?
So I mean, just to clarify, I think a couple of things come out of that. And please interject, CEO or engineer, if I've got the time.
I'd rather I didn't.
Well, my understanding is that this is not going to be an overly arduous administrative burden, that I think was the pricey of what Mr Graham said.
CEO?
Yes, thank you. This is work that we would intend to bring to a new council anyway as part of our process to bring new councillors up to speed. The real issue will be the challenge of resourcing going forward. That's a challenge that we're seeing already and have been trying to deal with for 12 months. That's not a reason in itself to avoid future-proofing and looking at those options. It's just the timeframe to deliver.
And just to clarify, we are manifestly struggling to get those human resources. And I'm sure we're not the only council in that space. And my next question is, with that being the case, what is the helpfulness and availability within the contracting and the private sector to assist in these matters as well?
CEO, your opinion?
Similar to the employment situation.
Thank you, councillor.
The private sector is having all the same problems that we're having. We're all competing in the same straits.
Yeah. And again, so there's the basis largely of what I would be speaking at if I'd gone from the beginning. Stormwater is a manifestly important issue. I've got some practical things I could go through for what it's meant for our family this year. And again, as Alderman Warren intermedited, this is an area that unlike other councils, we have been to a degree financially preparing for. And again, these tend to be long-lasting assets. These concretes tend to stay in the ground for literally generations. And if push comes to shove, it is eminently reasonable and eminently fair to do long-term borrowing for long-term assets like this, if the need arises.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm sort of at odds with this particular motion because it's maybe heading in the direction of where we're going to expect a report from our chief engineer on potential projects to future-proof Clarence's stormwater system. In other words, that is a huge task that may be seen as being deliverable. And I take on board the comments of this chief executive officer and the chief engineer in relation to the costing of this and how we are going to achieve it. Now, I'm the one amongst many who is in favour of and did support the climate change matters in the old council. And I know that stormwater is an issue. It's a huge issue in Clarence. And we all know from experiences in the last four or five years what the problem that has dealt to the community across all those coastal low-lying areas. I'm at odds here as to whether we are reinventing the wheel, Mr Mayor. And I'd say that with the greatest respect to the mover and seconder because I know their intent is to try to grapple with stormwater and to deal with that particular issue as number one priority within the city. The simple fact of the matter is, we haven't delivered on South Street. We do, and I know we have budgeted for it. We budgeted for it in the 2223 financial year. I stand corrected on that. I'm pretty sure it was in that year. And there was some $6 million that's going to be spent in relation to that. I stand corrected if it was 2223 or 2122. But I know we've budgeted for it, the money is there. And at the stage, we haven't delivered, nor have we started. Although we have started on the Percy Street and the stormwater inundation that's caused enormous concern to the pharmacist in the Belray Village and so on. And we got that project underway. So look, I'm not trying to say, look, this isn't a good motion. But what I'm trying to indicate is that we do not need to flag that we are going to completely blow the budget in the 2324 financial year and provide to the community, which this has the potential to do that, that we are going to undertake and answer and achieve all these stormwater issues that have been addressed in the stormwater system management plan, which I supported, as many others around the table did. But I think we need to go softly, softly on this. And I really think we need to do those key priorities firstly, that have been addressed in our budget to date. And secondly, we need to follow the example of our, those particular processes of the stormwater system management plan.
Thank you councillor James. Are there any other councillors wishing you like a contribution? Councillor Hume, and then councillor Hunter?
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions, Mr Mayor. Through you, possibly to Mr Graham. The standard for stormwater is to deal with what regularity of storm event?
Thank you, Mr Graham.
In terms of new subdivisions, both infrastructure design for a one-in-20-year storm or 5% annual recurrence. Also, new subdivisions are required to have stormwater flow direction for the 1 in 100. And also, we have requirements for any new subdivisions to be designed for the strain rainfall runoff current standards, but also for a climate change allowance for land for increasing storms at the levels of 2100.
Thank you. Councillor Hume?
I did have a second question, but I think Mr Graham has actually answered it, which is, you know, have those measures of what consists of a 1 in 21 in 100 year event, have they been updated to allow for the, you know, the impacts of storm events as a result of climate change?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. So councillor, anything else councillor here?
No, look, I think the idea of future-proofing is a good one in terms of any infrastructure, and particularly when we've got infrastructure that is going to need in the future to cope with ever greater extremes. So I commend councillor Mulder for bringing this motion forward. And, you know, we do, we are facing though some big challenge in terms of delivering infrastructure, in terms of the increasing cost of delivering infrastructure. So, you know, there are a number of ways of, I guess, approaching it. And it'll be interesting to see the options that come forward. And I think I'd really like to see the information in this report come to a workshop so we can discuss those options in detail. Alderman Walker mentioned the possibility of debt funding. I think another one to potentially look at is, you know, if we slow the programme to be able to free up some resources to put into those, you know, future-proofed assets. But I'd be interested in seeing all those options come to a workshop and, you know, to be able to discuss that in more detail.
Certainly. Thanks councillor Hume. Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to ask councillor Mulder a question through you, if that's okay?
If councillor Warren does it. In his right of reply, he can then deal with it at that time.
Just a question regarding what you imply by a report? Is that a council officer's report or a full plan?
So he'll, if something else, he'll address that. He doesn't have another opportunity at the moment to answer a question. If he does, in his right of reply, he can then choose to address that question then.
My way of interjection to you is that I'm talking about a report, not a project.
Thank you. Okay. That clarifies it very clearly for me. I think it's great to have this information presented to us. It's something I've definitely been questioning for the last little while. And it would be great to, as a new councillor, to have that information presented in a concise manner. My only concern before answering that question was impact on council staff and resourcing, but that's been answered, so I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Darko?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I will keep it short. Yeah, I'd just like to commend councillor Mulder on moving this. And as councillor Kennedy noted, climate change waits for no one. So this is urgent, and I think that it's a very good thing that we have a motion here that can help light a fire onto that in any way.
Thank you councillor Darko. Being no other speakers, right reply councillor Mulder?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I thank the colleagues for their encouraging remarks, with some exceptions, of course. I do notice, and I will withdraw my earlier statement, not everyone campaigned on climate change. And of course, I thank Alderman James for being that very important aspect of any debate that avoids groupthink by being a contrarian. So I take the points on board, and I thank councillor Hunter for bringing out the point that this is about a report. This isn't about funding the actual projects. Because if you've got half an ear to the ground, you will see that it is not just Clarence that's impacted by climate change, but it is throughout the country. It's the rivers in New South Wales, and it's across the board. And the federal government, to its credit, is stepping up in this. The federal government is talking about things. So when we come down to the project stage, wouldn't it be great if Clarence was shovel-ready for these projects to emerge? For the pump-out solutions, for the detention basins? I mean, for heaven's sake, we do it with sewage, why can't we do it with stormwater? So those are the sorts of things that this motion is designed to do. And yes, there'll be some impact on officers' time, and yes, there'll be some impact on report. But thank you, councillor Darko, climate change waits for no one. We've got to be ready for this. We don't want to be in a situation...
We don't want to be in a situation where in South Street or in Seven Mile Beach or Cremona, where we've actually had houses demolished or made completely unsafe, and then have the thing of saying, "Well, do we abandon the suburb entirely?" Or do we end up, as they are in New South Wales, having entire suburbs? Like, the city of Forbes has been declared uninsurable for flood events. If that doesn't tell you we need to do detention ponds and we need to delay this stuff, then I don't know what is. So I think it's an absolute responsibility. I think it's, there is some urgency with it. But the funding is something that will come down the track. And I would imagine that we will get, there'll be a lot of support and funding. And I just hope we're shovel-ready when the time comes, and that's what this is designed to do. Thank you.
Councillor Mulder, thank you. I'll put the motion of 9.1, councillor Mulder's motion, all those in favour? That's unanimous. I think colleagues moving now on to item 9.2. Notice the motion councillor Chong?
I'll move the motion standing in my name.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Thank you, councillor Warren. Councillor Chong?
Thank you. Some years ago, I attended a citizenship ceremony, and the representative from the federal government who spoke, said that Clarence had the greatest mix of different ethnic groups in Tasmania. Now, I don't know if that's still true. But as we experience a period of rapid growth, we're becoming an increasingly diverse community, including matters of faith. As the deputation noted earlier, and thank you, Mr Chick, we are also increasingly a society that is more secular. Fewer of us attend churches of any religion than in the past. However, non-denominational the prayer we have been saying at the beginning of meetings is. It has had its time. I want to thank my colleagues who've offered some thoughts on whether we should have some silent reflection or some potential words to say at the beginning of such a silence. I thought long and hard about whether to amend this motion to include that, but decided at the end to initially leave it as it stood. I would like council to have time to consider what we want to proceed in our meetings and how that interacts with the important acknowledgement of country, and that needs some time. We are a new council with a different range of experiences and views, and I think we should take the time to settle in and then decide what, if anything, we want going forward. Those of you who know me outside of council will know that my mother was an Anglican priest. When I was thinking about this motion, I asked her opinion. She made two comments that I thought were really interesting. Firstly, that no one in public life should need to be told to do the best for their community. We are all elected to that. We swear an oath to do that, and it should be central to everything that we do. Secondly, that faith is a personal choice. And in a society where there's a separation between church and state, in our case, local government, bringing faith into that setting is unnecessary. As I said at the beginning, I believe that saying a prayer at the beginning of council meetings has passed its time. As we look to what we want this council and Clarence to be in the future, we need to show we recognise the diversity and changing nature of our community. I seek my colleagues' support.
Councillor Warren?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I'd like to thank councillor Chong for bringing this motion and for that very moving speech, which I won't even attempt to add to. I'll take a slightly different tack. So what I'd like you to do this evening, before voting on this motion, is to reflect on the purpose of the council prayer. Leaving aside its religious nature for the moment, its intended inclusion in the council agenda is to make us think about why we're here, who we represent, and how we can make the best decisions for those people. However, the prayer as it stands has become like white noise. I've observed colleagues over the last five years, and I suspect that very few actually pay attention to the words or ponder their importance because it's become too familiar or, in many cases, too irrelevant. Worse, I've seen colleagues stand with closed eyes and bowed heads echoing an emphatic amen at the end and then proceeding to behave in a very un-Christian-like manner. Put simply, the prayer is not working. Now, consider the number of councils around Australia, and I have a list here if anybody's interested, which have in recent years chosen to replace the prayer with some other sort of non-religious reflection, a minute's silence, or with nothing at all. Here in Tasmania, our council, for example, has not had meetings with prayer for some years. I thank colleagues for suggestions of what might replace the prayer, if indeed anything, and would welcome the opportunity to discuss this briefly at a workshop so that all voices may be heard. Finally, I'd like to remind colleagues that this is not a planning matter. There are no rules to follow except the first function of councillors, as listed in the Local Government Act 1993, section 28, 1A, which is to represent the community. We've been provided with statistics tonight from the most recent ABS census, which clearly shows that the people we represent no longer consider themselves a predominantly Christian society. I therefore seek your support in ensuring that the first impression people get when seeing a Clarence council meeting is one of inclusion and welcome by ensuring that we replace the prayer with something or nothing that allows councillors to reflect on their responsibilities in a way that is meaningful to them. I seek your support.
Councillor Hume, then councillor Goine, then councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to start off by thanking Mr Chick for his very excellent deputation. I too have been paying close attention and interest to the ABS statistics over time and noticing the rapidly growing number of people who profess that they have, well, report that they have no religion, or they report that they have a religion other than Christianity. You know, in a society that was, you know, decades ago predominantly Christian, predominantly church-going, maybe it was appropriate to have, you know, some kind of expression that said that our, you know, "May our work be guided by God." But a lot of people like me, and I'm a vowed atheist, you know, don't believe that my work is guided by God. I believe my work is predominantly guided by the community, and the community I represent is becoming far more diverse in their religious beliefs, including those who don't have any religion. And something I've also been interested to observe is, because I do attend a number of citizenship ceremonies, is a growing number of people who take the affirmation rather than choosing to take the oath. That's been an interesting trend over time. And I've been to some ceremonies where the majority of people choose to take the affirmation. So, you know, and it's not just about the community we represent. It's also about the appropriateness, as Mr Chick rightly observed, of whether it's appropriate to have a religious expression or religious observance to open what essentially is a public authority. You know, separation of church and state. So, you know, I support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hume. Councillor Goine?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm well aware that this is my first time I have spoken, and unfortunately, it's not going to be a popular opinion around the table. And I beg forgiveness, given that it's my birthday. I want to, whilst agree with everybody that has spoken, I have some topic of concern in the fact that I would like this to be discussed much more vastly. It is actually a very important conversation for the community. Whilst I will also say that I am, I'm not entirely sure I identify as atheist, I do not hold any strong religious beliefs, except for those that are my moral compass, which I believe I was elected upon. And having family that identify as Indigenous Tasmanians, I agree with Beth's sentiment about the white noise. I also think that, you know, for our acknowledgement of country bears the same thing, that the constant use of it can actually become something that we don't necessarily respect. And a lot of people don't respect the land and the elders, past and present. So I'd just like to make a point that whilst I'm not religious, my partner is a veteran who served this country under that flag for the Queen. And the Lord's Prayer has a direct reference to the fact that we are a part of the Commonwealth. And so not necessarily for us, it doesn't represent the religious nature. It's more of the fact that, you know, our sovereignty to the monarchy. So I just want to say that I think that we should really consider whether we remove the Lord's Prayer at this stage. And perhaps consider what we will replace it with, so.
Thank you, councillor Goine. Just a note too, please, that when we're in the chamber, to use councillors' titles.
Sorry.
I'm sure councillor Warren wasn't offended, but yeah.
I didn't either. Sorry.
Councillor Kennedy, thank you.
I was a bit slow. You didn't see me earlier, because all I really wanted to do... But I do need to ask the question. It's not the Lord's Prayer, is it?
No, it's not. No.
Because I have to be honest and say I never take any notice of the prayer. I too am an atheist. I just wanted to commend the mover and the seconder for their absolutely magnificent speeches tonight. And I know that for councillor Chong, it would have been difficult tonight. And I would just like to thank you both. This is something that has been important to a number of us, and I know it has been to a number of people in our community, so I'd just like to thank you both.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Darko?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I would also like to thank the mover and the seconder, and thank you councillor Chong for that heartfelt message. In terms of observing a prayer, I feel like there is a matter of respect to that. And as an atheist who was raised Catholic, who saw how deeply people of faith hold their faith, I feel as though it's disrespectful for me to observe a prayer for a God that I don't believe in. And as such, I strongly support this motion, and I think that it is a matter of respect.
Thank you, councillor Darko. Deputy Mayor, councillor Ritchie?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The motion before the council this evening is a simple one, but it's a very important one. And I also congratulate the mover and the seconder for bringing this issue to the table. As people are aware, I have circulated alternative ideas in respect of this issue. And I think that we probably all agree that from a principle perspective, the motion we're discussing is about acknowledging that we have a diverse community of many different faiths and cultural backgrounds, and a growing population of atheists and non-practicing believers. It's without dispute. And we've heard the figures, you know, in the city of Clarence, in 2021, the largest religious group was Anglican, 16%, while 49.2% of people had no religion. 6.1% of people didn't answer the question on religion at all. The number of those classified as Christian in Clarence reported, 24,684, or just over 40%. And that's slightly higher than the state average of 38.4. The total number of people classified as having no religion or secular beliefs, 30,250, or 49.2%, which is just slightly lower than the state average of 49.9. So it's further interesting to note that the number of people identifying as having no religious belief has increased by over 10,000 people in Clarence since 2016. So, Mr Mayor, as interesting as all that data is, what I think we should be trying to do here today is to promote a way forward that enables all people, regardless of their position on religion, to participate and for everyone in the community to feel included in a council meeting. So whatever we decide here today or at a later time should be about making more room for people, not less. Because it doesn't make sense to me to exclude one group to create an environment of inclusiveness for others. And unfortunately, I think from my perspective, removing the opening prayer without the replacement of anything at all heads down that pathway for me personally. Because I think failing to insert an appropriate replacement sends a particular message from my perspective. And I think that that's why I flagged an alternative motion that I foreshadowed, and I hope that would make people feel that we're able to participate across the board. And I do feel that our council sessions are far too important to be reduced to, well, the start of our sessions, to be reduced to silence or simply nothing. But likewise, I feel that we should also do more than just cover Christian denominations. For this reason, I'm actually asking councillors to oppose just the unilateral withdrawal or removal of the opening prayer and to give either consideration to an alternative motion or at least workshopping down the track. It wouldn't hurt to continue to leave it in place until we come up with a resolution. I'm just very uncomfortable with having a space of nothing. But I do appreciate the sentiment. I think we're all very close in where we're trying to head here, and I hope we can find a sensible pathway forward. Thank you.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And I actually thank Mr Chick for your very detailed account from APS and those trends that have developed, particularly in Clarence and also nationwide. The question here is, and I think the deputy mayor has really hit the nail on the head, that if we take and run with this motion, then we are saying no opening prayer. And over the next few months, consider whether a more inclusive affirmation or reflection silence is appropriate. Now, that may take a lot of time. It may end up with nothing. And if that's the way we want to head, then I suppose it's a reflection on the council and its new members who have their own views on having a prayer at the opening of a meeting. I think that we ought to have an alternative. And I would support, as seconder, the deputy mayor's proposal because it does put something into place, Mr Mayor, that in fact sends a message to the community that we want to have something there to believe in, to represent the community and have the expectation that we'll follow in their, not necessarily direction, but in their aspirations and so on. And by basically writing it off, we might then be seen to look to the next step of removing the Queen or the King.
Thank you, Alderman.
We have indeed introduced another flagpole out there.
Councillor Mulder?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. And in fact, this may be a fairly draconian step forward, in my opinion, particularly at this point in time when we are a new council. We've got wonderful views around the table, and we won't always agree with each other because that's the nature of the beast. But I think this really is not the way to go forward at this stage. And I would like to think that we would, and we've all been circulated with the deputy mayor's alternative motion, and that does give something in place of nothing. In this particular case, and I think Alderman Warren made something or nothing, and that's exactly what this motion, if it's carried tonight, will be. Whereas if we have something that doesn't necessarily identify a Christianity or any other particular religion, but it does have the responsibility, reflect our responsibilities, the community which we represent. And these are really good words because they identify with what we're here for and how we are going to go about our business. So I will not be supporting this motion. And if by some means or other that my colleagues decide to look at closely and even allow the deputy mayor's motion to come forward, then that would be a remarkable sort of insight and message to the community that we're not just scrubbing something and not putting something in its place.
Thank you, councillor James. Councillor Walker?
Thank you. What hasn't been listed in the motion is the purpose of the council prayer. And I suspect if we wrote, if we all wrote down what we thought the purpose of the prayer was, there would be probably 12 different answers. For me, it's an opportunity to reflect on the privilege and responsibility we have been entrusted by the present Clarence community to make decisions on their behalf today and into the future. Now, some items might occasionally seem trivial, but ultimately, they all matter. Our time on council will pass, but the decisions we make can and do impact long into the future. To me, the overriding opportunity of reflection will be removed by this motion with the only qualifier that we consider an alternate way of doing things at some point in a couple of months. we consider an alternate way of doing things at some point in a couple of months. My strong preference is that we replace the prayer with a period of reflective silence, as happens in our state parliament. This idea, well, if you want to think about it, the idea that it could be confusing at the local government level when we start with silence, when no such concerns have been raised at the state level, just doesn't wash with me. They're both livestreamed. And I want to make the point that a period of reflective silence offers choice. You talk about diversity. People that are of faith can use that opportunity should they wish to recite a prayer. Others can choose just to reflect on the future. Some may even zone out. But we are giving the opportunity for people to meaningfully reflect on this, should they wish to do so. The other suggestion is listed in the explanatory notes, is that the 12 of us councillors would basically sit around a whiteboard and via consensus compile an affirmative prose to be encanted at the beginning of council meetings. This seems like a cruel and unusual endeavour to have to participate in. I believe councillor Chong's motion will pass tonight. The new council has decided to change the workshop format from evenings to afternoons and the workshop frequency. Now, I am a dissenter on this change, and I believe that the business and complexity of council is only increasing, and we need more time, not less time, as a group to arrive at informed positions, and that council moving from a workshop from two out of three weeks to one out of three weeks makes us less informed, less nimble, and less able to arrive at optimal decisions, or at the very least make least worse ones. The structure of council meetings is one of debate, my perspective versus your perspective. And it is much more so than a debate, than a discussion of what the pros and cons of different options, what are the unintended consequences, and how can we arrive at best outcomes. From time to time at meetings, the speech of my fellow councillors does change my perspective and indeed my vote. But when another councillor's contribution raises new questions, unless they're the mover, there is no opportunity to seek answers to those questions. Now that no workshop has been held prior to this motion is regrettable. I say this in light of then councillor Warren's motion that passed in March of this year, which included the direction that we would discuss the council prayer and alternatives to it at a workshop. This didn't occur. But had it happened, I expect that as per councillor Chong's motion, the meeting prayer would no longer continue. However, I think we would have arrived at an alternative mechanism prior to the motion. We would not just be taking something down, we would be replacing it. And I'm confident that change would have had an overall wider buy-in around the table than the numbers I've counted so far. In that absence, I'm requesting from Alderman, no Alderman at all, I'm indeed requesting from someone called councillor Chong, the following amendment to the motion as circulated earlier today, so as to read that council remove the opening prayer from the beginning of council meetings, and over the next few months, trial a moment of reflective silence. Does the mover accept that amendment?
Mover and seconder, councillor Chong, you accept that? Councillor Warren, that now becomes the substantive motion.
I thank the mover and seconder deeply and sincerely. I was probably going to use remaining time to talk about how whilst the decline in the Abrahamic faiths is evident in the census figures, that the actual rise of religiosity into secular endeavours is increasing, and how unhealthy it is, be it wokeism or Trumpism, et cetera. But I think I will just take it and bank it at this point. Thank you for your time.
Wise man.
Thank you. So before we go, noting that there's only two councillors yet to speak, I'll just read the amended motion, that is, that council remove the opening prayer from the beginning of council meetings, and over the next few months, include a period of reflective silence.
Trial a moment of reflective silence, yeah.
Okay, good trial then.
Could we define what a few months would entail?
Well, that's...
Would three months suit?
And over a period of three months, are we happy, mover and seconder, happy with that?
Can we just read what it will say?
So the council remove the opening prayer from the beginning of council meetings, and over a period of three months, trial a moment of reflective silence. Is that... Excuse me, sorry. We're just trying to work out this motion, thank you. I won't have cross-chamber chatter. So is the mover happy with that amendment? I'll read it again. It's on the board?
No.
All right. I'll read it again. The council remove the opening prayer from the beginning of council meetings, and over a period of three months, trial a moment of reflective silence.
That is what I moved, and there was a very liberal interpretation to my use of the word moment. If that is something of concern, I'm very happy to redefine it for council.
And trial one minute of reflective silence. Is that...
Just a moment is fine. A moment is fine.
A moment, okay. So just confirming, councillor Chong, you're happy with it?
Yes.
Amendment. Councillor Warren is the seconder?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Now, that is now the motion. And there's an opportunity for councillor Hunter or councillor Mulder to make a contribution. Councillor Hunter, do you wish to?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say that I support the motion. I think it's great. It's a great way for a new council to move forward.
Thank you. Councillor Mulder.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was waiting for Alderman of council walkers to make their contribution, because the nature of the debate is that that thing comes in at the last minute, and then we're addressing something. So I quite take on board the moment of silence. I just think if you think a minute is appropriate, is a moment, then I challenge to hold your breath for a moment. I would strongly suggest 10 or 15 seconds would be more than appropriate, about the length of the prayer anyway. So that would be much more appropriate if we're talking about a moment. Getting back to this idea of the prayer, I think what we're really doing is, when we talked about the acknowledgement of country, or as I would love it to be, if we could get an Indigenous person to do a welcome to country at least once a year, and then do it with acknowledgement, that is part of the reflection. To me, that is part of the reflecting on what we're doing here now, because we're acknowledging the Indigenous people. We're not denying that the world has moved on. But we're also acknowledging, when we do that acknowledgement to country, the custodianship that they exercise for thousands of years, and a lot of that now rests on our shoulders. So acknowledging country acknowledges our responsibility to the country that we are dealing with. So in a sense, the acknowledgement to country takes over from the religious prayers. The problem with the religious prayers, if you try to get it inclusive, it will take the whole meeting. So you've got to take it back. And one of the problems that we have with saying, oh, it's a non-denominational prayer, is that it's still a prayer to a greater spirit. And the moment you do that, you outline those people who either don't believe in a greater spirit or are agnostic towards it. So you've got to really remove that religiosity, or should I say, the faith-buster components from it. Because these prayers, when they are done, is the greatest trap that I believe that religions of just about every colour have done. It's one thing to say to your adherents, this is what you believe, and these are the rules that flow from that belief, to then impose those rules on people who don't believe that. That is where this whole business of having religion, faith, spirits, the greater spirit, actually is counterproductive to what you're trying to do in a secular society. So, you know, I commend it. I think this is a great move. It's something that I would like to go on with. And since it's been allowed in the previous debate, I see this as a great way forward of becoming the secular republican society that we would all like to see.
Thank you councillor Mulder. So before I put the motion, I'll just read it again, as amended, that council remove the opening prayer from the beginning of council meetings, and over a period of three months, trial a moment of reflective silence. I'll put that motion. All those in favour, please?
I don't think to say anything first.
Oh, with my eyes.
I mean, this is fine. You can put the motion in.
Councillor Chong, my apologies. So it's the second time I've jumped the gun tonight, so please.
All I wanted to say was thank you, my colleagues, for all your commentary. It's been really interesting to listen to people's different viewpoints, and I commend the motion.
Thank you councillor Chong. Now that we've followed all the right steps, I'll put the motion. All those in favour. Those against? It's okay, thank you. Colleagues, now move on to councillor question time. There's no questions on notice. Answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, there is listed in the minutes, or the agenda, rather. Questions without notice, I think I'll start this side. Councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Through you to Mr Graham. Can I just ask when any maintenance was last carried out on Donner Road or Donner Road at Lordedale, if you have any idea?
Through, Mr Mayor. I'll have to take that one on notice.
Thank you. Councillor Kennedy, you got another one?
Okay. I guess this one goes back to Mr Graham as well. And again, this is not just speaking from a Seven Mile Beach perspective, it's from the coastal areas in particular, but those beaches that have high visitation in summer times, which is approaching, I think it's this week. So do we have any plans in place for the high numbers of visitation to those popular beaches, where already the roads have major problems? When the rain stops, the water lies for a long time, and we all know this, and then crews come in, patch up the potholes, rains again, washes it out, and the volume of traffic going into those areas over the next few weeks are going to be huge. And people are already asking questions as to how council is going to manage that level of visitation with the shape the roads are currently in.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Mr Graham.
Through, Mr Mayor. Our pothole crews are managing potholes as well as they can. For example, on Seven Mile Beach, Esplanade and Lewis Avenue, which have got some significant damage. But until the groundwater lowers, we cannot do any major repairs to those, because it'll just pop up again. Other than that, no, there's no other present solutions to those until the groundwater dissipates, and then our crews will give those areas a high priority.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Chong. Councillor Warren?
I apologise that this probably should have been a question with notice, but I'm late to the party as always. And again, through you, I'd like to ask everybody's favourite, Mr Graham, a question. Actually, I'm not sure, Mr Graham or Mr Apple, but there are three abandoned service stations that I'm aware of in our municipality, one in Pass Road, one in Clarence Road, and one in East Edward Highway, on the junction just near Justin Bay. And given that, it would be great to be able to use those for some purpose, like housing, for example, social and affordable housing, I'd just like to know what the status of those properties is. I presume they're privately owned. I did notice that the one in Clarence Street had the graffiti removed today, which was certainly an improvement. But the others are fairly loved, and I'd just like to know what the status is of those three sites, please.
Thank you councillor Warren. So, do you want to comment here?
We'd probably be best to take that on notice. As an overriding comment, they're privately owned, generally regarded as contaminated sites, so any progress forward with them is generally a bit complicated. But we'll get some accurate information for you.
Mr Pass, do you wish to add anything to that answer?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just going to note that we have been making contact with the business owners of the service stations to try to get an update, particularly to make sure that the condition they're in is upheld, hence the upgrade on the Clarence Street graffiti.
Thank you, Mr Pass. Councillor Warren? Councillor Darko, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councillor Goiney, and happy birthday. Councillor Walker.
Yes, I think it came up earlier tonight, but just for crystal clarification, I think it was stated, another one to Mr Graham, Boson Court Playground Works are expected to commence, I believe, was it February?
Mr Graham.
Through, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'll actually add that abandoned service stations don't come under my remit.
There is something.
We advised that the nominated contract intends to commence in the first week of February. I believe the end date is sort of towards the end of June, but I'll certainly update councillors to work's progress.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
I believe the Elget meeting is occurring between now and our next council meeting. So I know there was some commentary around the dereliction levy. There seemed to be some confidence in the wording there, so I would be hopeful that such sites could be slapped with such a thing.
Thank you councillor Walker. Councillor James.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I have two questions. Firstly, through you to Mr Lovell. Mr Lovell, I understand that the developer of the Opossum Bay Golf Course has presented to your department that substantial commencement has occurred in relation to that development. If so, has the permit been issued?
Mr Lovell?
Through, Mr Mayor. We have received documentation from lawyers representing the developer, setting out a case that they believe they have substantial commencement under the permit, which would mean that the permit exists infinitely. However, it's quite complicated process to determine whether that is correct or not, and we're undertaking a review and we're getting external legal advice as well. When the outcome of that is known, we'll be able to report it to the council.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Councillor James, your second question, please.
Thank you, Mr Lovell. Second question is in relation to the coastal management plan, and it's my understanding the consultant is about to produce his report. So if that's true, is it expected that a council workshop will be designated for consideration or discussion in relation to that?
Thank you councillor James. Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor. I'll get an update from my staff on the timing of the local coastal management plan, and potentially when a workshop will be ready, and I'll inform council through a briefing.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I only have one question. I'd like to be interested to know what the status is of the sale of unused Department of Defence land in Ruane.
So, do you care to answer that?
Thank you. Prior to the election, the then mayor and I met with a number of state representatives and Minister Julie Collins regarding that land. We're waiting on some further updates from the Department of Defence. That's a fairly slow process by all accounts. And we are probably due just to follow up and to see what that progress has been, so we'll certainly do that before Christmas. But it's generally around an 18-month period for a disposal through defence. But we certainly have expressed interest in that land as a potential homelessness crisis centre site of something of that nature.
Councillor Hunter.
No questions. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Mulder.
May I refer to a letter to the editor regarding Pass Road, in which, I must say very eloquently, as mayor of the council, you pointed out that there was a maintenance programme for the potholes on Pass Road that included regular repair. Could you just enlighten us as to what is the special programme for a thing? What sort of timeframes do we have? How often is the street patrolled? And what's the timeframe for repairing a pothole when one is discovered?
Thank you councillor Mulder. I'll actually defer, ask Mr Graham to answer that question, please.
Through, Mr Mayor. I'll take that one on notice in terms of what the actual timeframes. It has been previously asked, were we attending every two weeks? But I'll find out from our crew, and I'll inform council on that.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Mulder.
Secondly, is Pass Road some exception, or do we have regular patrols of all our roads in the city? And I asked that in the same question, in the same thing. I'll make an observation. But my next question is that councillors long promoted, I think, an ALGA, Australian Local Government Association, a programme of snap, send, resolve. I would like some information as to how much that is used in the city of Clarence, and what are the timelines for resolving something that's been snapped and sent.
Thank you councillor Mulder. I think we'll take that one on notice. Mr Graham, if I had a response in the weekly briefing report? Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Colleagues, we're now going to move into closed meeting, I invite a motion at effect, Mr Chick, and to those people at home, thank you for your company this evening, and I'll just wait for the feed to be ceased. Thank you, Council Chong, seconded by Council Warren, thank you, this is going to close the meeting, all those in favour?